Okay. Good evening and welcome. It is six oh five, March tenth, two thousand and twenty. We're going to be unified school boards open sessions called order. Before we move on, I'd like to call your attention to the artwork behind the board. The paintings are a collection of landscapes that depict a place of the students' choice. And they chose a color scheme that reflected their feelings about the place rather than using the colors of the actual landscape. They were done by the eighth grade students, art students. A second to really appreciate them. And I thank Ms. Weber for getting them here for us. And then speaking of students. Which one are you going to lead in the pledge Natalie or? Okay, and then Natalie's gonna lead us in the pledge allegiance.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible and liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you Natalie. This moves us to C for C report from closed session. I'm sorry, I have to read all this out. In closed session by a vote of five zero, the board took action to issue a notice of release to temporary certificated employees. Identification number seven, six, zero, 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 three, one, three, zero. Seven, six, zero, 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 thirty, one, thirty, two, seven, six, zero, 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 thirty, one, nineteen. Seven, six, zero, 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 thirty, one, thirty, nine. Seven, six, zero, 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 thirty, two, zero, zero. Seventy, six, zero, 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 thirty, sixty, two. Seventy, six, zero, 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 twenty, seven, sixty, three. Seventy, six, zero, 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 thirty, twelve. Seventy, six, zero, 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 twenty, nine, seventy. Seventy, six, zero, 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 thirty, one, thirty, one. Seven, six, zero, 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 twenty, nine, eighty, seven, ten, seven, six, zero, 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 twenty, eight, seventy, one. Pursuant to education code four, four, nine, five, four subdivision B effective at the end of the twenty, one, twenty, school year and directed. By the superintendent or does it need to send out appropriate legal notices? And this moves us to four D. Ms. Weber, are there any changes to the agenda? No, thank you, Ms. Weber. Board members can have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. Thank you. Any questions or comments before we vote? As a reminder, this meeting was originally intended to be a study session, but due to legal requirements to approve the second interim budget. Report and CSBA delegates timeline, we are blending a regular meeting with our planned study sessions so we can take action on those two items. Regular meetings have legal requirements different from study sessions such as public comment on non agenda items. Our focus for this meeting of tonight is still the discussion regarding universal TK. Natalie, are you voting this evening? May I have your student provisional vote to approve the agenda?
I.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries five zero and this moves us to five A. I did not see any members of the public. LBSD public comment forum closed today at noon with one comment in total. And that was shared with all board members. And since there are no members of the public, we'll move forward. To six for study session. I don't see any members of the public to make public comment on the report on universal transitional kindergarten planning and implementation. And so that gives Dr. Mayberry the floor.
Good evening, thank you. Yeah, we're our study sessions tonight will be a report on our universal kindergarten transitional kindergarten plan and implementation and where we're sharing with the board where things are at. And just to start, can I a little quick little background? As you know, the state intends to transition to universal TK or transitional kindergarten program. Beginning next school year by pushing back the enrollment cut off by two months, two months. Each of the next four years, so you have universal TK by twenty-five, twenty-six, so four years from now. Tonight, we'll be sharing information around the background, playing development process, estimated projections for enrollment, some programming options. Impacts on staffing and facilities as well as a little bit of information about our special education preschool program. Before I go any further, I did want to just introduce a few staff members that are here. As well as some of our partners that have been a part of the TK planning process the last few months for LBUSD. We have work group that I'll mention, talk about more in detail later. But they're in that group. Tonight, here we have April Smith and Kimberly Mattson, Ryan Zeta, Tammy Mays and Laura Kirkie could make it. Irene White wasn't able to make it, but Jeff Dixon's here. We also have Chris Steady and Dr. Hatchell who have helped as well. And then we have our wonderful partner Pam Estes from the CEO at the Boys and Girls Club as well, so they'll be here to answer questions as things come up. I will kind of go through each of these sections and then really with the goal, not necessarily to. Develop the whole, our goal is out to develop a program tonight, but really get board direction on a few areas. One, one being like, where do we want to go in regards to the state's requirements or their initiatives to expand this program, knowing that? We likely are, at this point, we don't know of any additional dollars that are ongoing, so one time funds, we don't have additional ongoing dollars. Do we want to continue with that as the other districts are doing around us? As well as exploring, but not necessarily committing at this time to partnership with somebody for an expanded program. Currently, we have a half day program, so I'll get more into that as well, so those are kind of the general two areas we want to get direction in. TK and Kinder registration is right around the corner. We'll probably depending on wherever we end up tonight, we'll be sending something out in the next two days. As we do that registration and orientation in April, there's some campus tours in May. But that is not very far away, so we want to start moving forward and thinking about that expansion piece where we fit within that, so. This first slide that's up here. Gives the, this is a graphic from California Department of Ed. It gives a general overview, the different types of preschool programs, TK programs. They started saying universal at the state level as soon as they said universal TK, they shortly after started calling it universal pre-K. Which of course confused everybody because there is not universal pre-K. They're using that as an umbrella term, not necessarily as everyone's getting preschool. So, but they are talking about universal TK, so within that's universal TK, you have Head Start, you have private programs or subsidized programs. You have state preschool program that the Boys and Girls Club has, we have a special education preschool program. As well, which we'll talk again a little bit more about tonight, but that's kind of that general overview, so if you are seeing things coming from the state of California, you may hear universal pre-K. Again, what that really means is universal TK are four year olds eventually getting to that in four years and then these other programs that may impact preschoolers. But not actually universal pre-K, so. I sent them an email, but I didn't get anything back, sorry. All right, so next slide, how does this connect to our goals as a board, as a district? Really focusing, seeing it on academic scores, academic foundational skills, there's some and TK as. You know, they would be at our, be with our teachers. Expanding have more, having more kids there, that's more opportunities for foundational skills in math, some exploration skills and citizenship and service skills. Certainly along literacy, which is one of the most important things we're doing at the early ages. And goal two, a lot of social development is really vital at this age. And we have some programs that we use specifically for younger kids. That they would be a part of, and then our last goal really around making sure we have inclusive schools and we're providing. Research-based interventions, it would really give us opportunity on the early literacy intervention and prevention, a lot of work as that would expand. That has a lost long lasting impact, right? The sooner you are able to identify students that may be at risk. Of literacy, any type of literacy challenges, we're able to intervene that much more sooner, which impacts them that much more later in first grade, second grade, third grade, let alone later on, so. There's definitely some, a level of, if you could see all four years, all these four year olds with our school rather than just all these five year olds. The different level of support we provide around literacy for sure. Going to next slide, this kind of an overview of our playing development process. You know, this, I went and looked back when TK started, I think, I believe. I want to say eight or nine years ago, the state actually gave a little bit over two, two and a half year runway to get it started the first two months. We had about a, we were probably going on about five or six months right now runway, so much quicker. Shift going on right now, but in the fall, there was some announcements. Around this, some funding towards this, it was not a lot of information at that time, but we did understand there was some funding, we did a board presentation in November, based on kind of what we knew and what we thought the impacting factors were. In January, they started releasing like here's some one time support you might get, here's how things would be funded. Some of the, some of the planning information came out, we started a leadership group, which was a mix of some of our partners, a mix of our TK teacher, preschool teacher. Our structural coach, principals, we actually have our, some of our architects, staff were there that we work with. Our facility staff, finance staff, so we had a group that really just kind of jumped in, we're meeting weekly. Basically for the last two months to really kind of dig into all the different factors that might impact this type of expansion. And so that's what that group has been doing for a while, I've been sharing some information with our PTA council and our PTAs. We went to a visit in early February to corn out a unified, which has a pretty comprehensive preschool and TK program that they had already built out prior to any of this. A large group of us, I want to say that we had at least two cars, right, two full cars going down there and back in one day. We just immediately, we did met with Boys and Girls Club to kind of talk through some initial ideas, we met with the city as well. We parent interest survey that actually went out this week, which we've already gotten, just checked this afternoon, we have gotten six, a little bit over sixty responses on that. About half were from next year, potentially next year TKers and then some from what would be TK students that might want TK in a couple of years. Then we, so we'll get, getting those roles, we really haven't had time to analyze those yet, we'll have our meeting today of study session and then we really start digging into. The impact of like, do we need to hire, do we need to hire teacher, what are impacted on facilities, thinking down the road, really what we've come to is. We want to think about this and this is how the next set of slides will look. We want to think about this as like, what's the impact for next year, right? Because of the short runway, we really have to think about next year. And then we want to think four years down the road, so if this is fully implemented in four years, what's the potential impact? There's a lot of factors that are unknown, this will be something that if we go forward with that for implementation. Things, you know, we make different decisions in two years and three years and four years based on enrollment, based on facility availability. This whole host of factors that will definitely be moving parts over the next couple of years. So if you go to the next slide around enrollment, so we use a couple of different models for enrollment. In general, this seemed like the simplest model to communicate, we have basically averaged about twenty-three students the previous five years, not counting this year, which is a full COVID year. We're actually at eleven students this year, which is most programs of this, the lower kids are down quite a bit. Parents are just keeping their kids home with all the different health concerns going on. But the previous five years, it had been at twenty-three students, so if you can say estimate that at twelve. Basically twelve students every, for every two months it was available, if you project that out, we would have thirty-six next year and eventually end up with seventy-two students. That's about half of what our kindergarten is right now, kindergarten, depending on when you check during the year, it's usually somewhere around a hundred and forty students between the two schools. So that's the number we're kind of projecting at, where that would be certainly, we could, you know, if it's offered all four years, we could have the exact same numbers. As our kindergarten numbers, it could be about a hundred and forty TKers. Or we could end up with less if there's options that the families don't necessarily want, or they have other options that they're looking for. If you go to the next slide, this is just some projected enrollment around kindergarten. What it shows is. You know, it shows our average there around one forty-four there on the bottom, this is the state's model that they use, one forty-four. Potentially have a high of one seventy-four, one twenty-two, so they're projecting things to kind of stay the same at our kinder level for the next couple of years. And then. Looking at the TK, their averages were a little bit lower than ours, again, if you go to that next, I think we're on that, you know, next slide here. They have a high of one twenty-two, a low of thirty-eight and an average of fifty-seven when it's fully implemented. Again, we had our projections about seventy-two, there's a couple of other different factors in there to consider right now, we'll talk about this. More detail, but we have one TK classroom over at Al Moro Elementary School. One of the options we're considering is having, also having one at TOW. But we know there are some families who have decided not to enroll in TK because of the different challenges of location. We also offer a half day program and not without an extended day program. We know there's a lot of families that are really interested in extended day program as well, that's been very clear feedback from our families. So that could change that projection higher than what the state has of fifty-seven, so we're kind of moving forward with seventy-two and we'll have to kind of continue to reassess that. Assuming if we went forward, we'd reassess that every year, is this, are we, are students enrolling, are they still going elsewhere, what does that look like? Each year and then we do adjust accordingly. The next slide talks a little bit about programming, which is a little tricky to get into. Our current program there on the left. Yes.
Would you like us to ask questions as you're going along or would you like us to hold them?
I would say it's up to you, I can go through it all, there's, you saw those four different factors, if it's easier for you just to ask questions, then I think that's fine as well.
I just had a quick question on that, I want to remind you're getting to it, I'll hold my question.
Okay. Whatever works, thank you. So our programming currently, we do have a half day program with AM and PM cohorts as well, there's a little bit of an overlap. Our general elementary school day is from eight to around two fifteen or two twenty. And so they do overlap a little bit, we have one TK teacher, it's over Al Moro. What we're looking at and kind of recommending based on some of the feedback would be a half day program with an extended day option. The site to determine one option, but either way having a partnership. With someone who does this on a regular basis and our partner has always been Boys and Girls Club. That we would obviously have to continue to academic and developmental, developmentally approach, appropriate, developmentally appropriate curriculum. But we would be nice to be able to partner with someone like Boys and Girls Club, which has a pretty extensive social, social development, we've used them not only. Not as much after these, these ages, we actually use them at the, all the way through elementary, have we used them at the middle school, we used them recently even at for high school programs. Around social emotional wellness and different social development programs and friendship programs. And so having that partnership and thinking through the, beyond just those three hours or three and a half hours that they might be doing TK, there's certainly a lot of potential there with the kids. The, and again, we're looking at potentially option at Al Moro and TOW. And that would obviously to be dependent on enough students that we think, which we do think there is enough interest in that. But if we didn't have enough interest, we certainly, you know, if we end up at seventeen students, it doesn't make sense to have it at both sites, no matter, no matter what the decision or direction is. This next slide just shows a picture of one of the classrooms over at Boys and Girls Club and their preschool. So you kind of see, looks pretty similar to our classrooms actually when you look at it. So just want to kind of just show, just get a visual of that as in a lot of your in our classrooms and some people are at the Boys and Girls Club and some are not, so this is just a very. One quick picture there from their facility. And again, we'll have Pam is here to ask questions or of her as they come up and we kind of check in at the end. If you go to the next slide, talking a little bit about staffing. Again, you'll see a lot of these factors kind of overlap, but because they all impact each other, but there is one classroom at Al Moro, one teacher. Max of twenty-four students, the way it's set up right now. Next year, if we went forward, we would have potentially have two classrooms, one at Al Moro, one at TOW. We would need two teachers, there is some need for additional staff during that overlap time in order to keep that ratio. Next year, we have one more year where we can keep it a one to twelve, one to twelve adult to student ratio, then it goes to one to ten. And so we would need some staff during that overlap when you potentially might have eighteen, nineteen, twenty kids there, you need another adult there, as well as it's also during lunchtime, you may need to have to relieve. The teacher, you might need a break at that point between the two cohorts, so it's could be additional staff or it could be rearranging staff that's likely would be classified staff. So looking at next year, if you add another classroom, you could get up to forty-eight students if you had a one to twelve ratio. We're recommending one to ten, but if we had a one to twelve ratio, that's what it would look like. One more classroom, one more teacher, possibly some additional hours for classified staff to support that. Looking four years down the road, it's a little different, right? Right now, we have, I believe, seven kinder classrooms and kinder teachers, right? We're expecting potentially two at each site, if we go to that seventy-two number, you have two classrooms. If you try to do the extended day program on campus, then there's more, even more classrooms you would need to have the extended day, so extended day, we mean just to clarify. They might go to like eight to eleven thirty and then they go to another classroom. On campus for extended daycare to when their parents pick them up, so you could have staff come, we could have our own staff, you could have staff come to us from Boys and Girls Club, we can go to the Boys and Girls Club facility. We saw a picture of earlier, we would provide, certainly if that's the case, we would provide transportation for those families. One of the benefits of that, that I've seen is the initial TK surveys coming in. Is probably the highest factor is not even location for parents, it's really the extended hours. I've heard that over and over in the surveys, I've just initial look at it today, after two days of sending it, three days sending out. And a lot of families were like, I wish this was four hours, I wish this would go to two o'clock, I wish this went to five o'clock. And you have that potential when you partner with somebody to do that and you have facilities. That's the staffing piece, just a couple more slides here, we talked, really talked about facilities when we're talking about staffing. You know, having additional classrooms, even more classrooms if you're doing onsite extended daycare, if you're doing offsite, we don't have the additional classrooms. You just have transportation costs. We do know in our initial look through, there's definitely, and we've known this, and with something we need to improve no matter what is the bathroom restroom facilities. At the TK preschool kinder level, we have, all rooms should have one and most of our rooms do, we're in compliance. But if we want to get things up to standard, we would have that in every classroom, so as those teachers, number of teachers are shifted. We know we need to add that, either way, we need to be adding restrooms, potentially additional playground, depending on. How that plays out, whether they use the kinder playground, if they were, again, if we're doing an extended day program on campus. We definitely need another program playground for them versus if they're at, not the Boys and Girls Club, they have their playground, they have their facilities for that. And there's certainly additional classroom furniture. This next slide with cost kind of summarizes, you know, the expected cost of running the program, you know, like as we said. We talked about next year, as you go down the road, you're, you know, you're really adding a whole grade, right? You're adding a whole nother grade level, so there's, you know, thinking through the cost salaries of teachers. Modernization or new construction, if we needed to add more classrooms. You know, there, we know enrollment is declining, but we also have smaller class sizes than we've ever had, so there's a, there's a, there's a. Decision, decision and approach to that, the class sizes as well, you know, if you have smart class sizes, you need more classrooms, you have larger class sizes, you need less classrooms, so. If we maintain small class sizes, we know we have very limited space, we wouldn't have enough space this time, probably for what it would look like in four years down the road. And then that is TK and I have one. Piece of information on the next one, I just want to talk about preschool program, this is not really the main focus for tonight, but. It is encompassing in our early childhood program, right, that we do with school readiness as well as our learning link. And you know, right now, we have, it's a five hour program, we have one classroom, one teacher, they need some improvement in restroom facilities. They have three IAs, instructional assistants, therefore there's seven students. That's pretty intense, pretty intense supportive environment. One of the biggest things that we know we need with that is they need to be integrated with all students, not just students who have IPs, and so. They should be integrated with general education students, and so we have to go off site to do that right now. So having some type of program down the road where maybe there's another classroom that they can integrate with would make a big difference in that program. As well as potentially, you know, any other upgrades, if we added another preschool classroom to allow that, that is what Cornell has, Cornell has a. Such that they have integrated special education and gen, gen education, gen, general education preschool program, it's integrated, we have lots of adults in there, you and. You know, the kids are all intermingled and it was a really wonderful program to be able to go visit for. And then right now, our school readiness is actually over Al Moro and our preschools at top of the world, at some point, want to set up the facilities that we can have them both there. That we're able to that, to do that this year. So that's kind of the big picture overview. It's probably, I would say it's probably easiest to go back, instead of going to the next slide, to go back to that second slide. Which kind of has the buckets of how we're. We're looking at it. One more, two, one more, one more. Right there, so really looking at questions and feedback. Around the, the, any questions around the planning development process where we're at right now, knowing there's a lot more work to do. Any questions around enrollment, different programming options, again, we're not necessarily going to make a decision on what kind of program we would be. Running at this time, but really wanting to get the key thing around the direction, like do we want to continue? With the state requirements and expectations around expanding TK. As well as this extended day program that we don't currently offer and partnering with that. These are kind of the buckets that we are looking at through and they're also looking at through the lens of, you know, next year versus four years. So with that, we have some of our amazing staff here and partners and. And then myself too, to ask, answer questions or thoughts or feedback.
Does anyone have a, members of you have questions?
I wondered about the, the total preschool philosophy, I know that study that came out of Tennessee or Kentucky. That was very random and this kids improved the first few years by third grade, they were equal and after that. They actually went downhill and there were a lot more discipline problems, now I know another studies coming out of Boston. But a lot of people in the preschool field, which you are, I know are looking at. That maybe it's beneficial for students to have more playtime, more. You know, more free time, not be so academic and that maybe. One thing I read was talking about all the lining up and always keeping quiet and pretending you have a bubble in your mouth. And it's really not natural for a lot of little children and those things can build up and come out later and. If, if we do this. Universal pre-K, I just want to make sure we're helping children in the long run, not just helping them get a better test score in second grade, but then go downhill as they get older, so what's? What's the philosophy there?
I agree with you, we want to make sure that our programs are developmentally appropriate and our kids get a good mix of those social play skills. As well as the pre-academic skills and learning through play-based experiences and our TK program right now is fantastic. So if we were expanding this for preschool, I think we would look at it through a different lens than we're looking at it for TK.
Sorry, do you have any longer term data about what's happened to your kids that have gone through years that are maybe in fourth or fifth grade now?
That have gone through the preschool program or the TK program? Because currently our preschool programs all special education students.
Oh, right.
And, and TK, I don't have any.
I guess really for the TK.
Right, yeah, that would be something we can dive into.
Yeah, I mean, and we don't have, we haven't done a study the way that one that came out. The, in, but however, if you were to talk to any of the kindergarten teachers, right, the kids that are in TK like come in with so many more. Skills and way to connect to students right off the bat, so they're, not only are they an older four year old, right? At that age, they're also coming in, having been in school for a year and understanding different ways to interact, more planned out social development. Different ways to integrate with the, with the academic portions of it, so they do come in and on top of already being an older student, so in some ways, it's actually giving them an extra boost up.
Right, I, I understand and it looked like an extra boost up, but as they got older, that really didn't come through and I know. Board member Kelly and board member Vickers have worked with preschool and I, you know, if you have anything to add about how academic it should be and.
Well, I don't, my understanding is the program we offer now, the intention is not academic. I mean, it's not what you're, what you're referencing and you're talking about another state that gave some data on programs in their states, that what you stated Tennessee or something. I mean, I don't think that we.
No, they, their program, the reason, I mean, it was for thousands of kids and it was totally random, so it was a really good study. And their kids made good progress, they in, you know, they learned the skills in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, they made good progress. By third grade, they were leveling out, as they got older, their skills dropped.
Heard that, I heard, but I'm saying you were referencing. Heard that. I heard, but I'm saying you were referencing.
It doesn't matter. I mean, I, I can show you others. Well, I can show you other studies. The point is how academic should the preschool be for kids in the long run?
Well, I think the question you want to ask then is you want to have a report from our current program. What, how they set their program up, how they structure the program, how much time is free play, how much time is socialization, how much, I mean, how much outside time there is? Because I, I don't know that. I've seen the program, open house, back to school nights. I've been, I've been very impressed with the program.
I have too.
Because of the intent of starting that, the intent of, of starting my understanding statewide or even national is that. Children who have had preschool experience come into kindergarten, better prepared to start the kindergarten experience. And so they wanted to make sure that children who didn't have that opportunity could get it and they would offer that through public education. So I mean, but I, I think you're.
That makes sense, but I'm saying that a lot of researchers in preschool now are thinking a little bit differently.
Well, it depends. It depends on what preschool that you, that you choose. Sure.
Just, we're kind of interchanging preschool and traditional kindergarten. They're completely separate. We don't currently have a preschool program that, that is structured that way. So we have a transitional kindergarten program. So it's, I just want to just caution that.
They were talking really about a transitional kindergarten, about four and a half year olds.
Okay.
I'm probably not using the red, the right language, but that because I know we have transitional kindergarten, but I think that's. It was for children who were, who hadn't, who had that delayed starting time to pick them up and to bring them in earlier. That's why the numbers were small to start with. So yeah, thank you for that correction, Mike. It's not a preschool per se. But I do know that there are preschools and once public schools start offering a TK, they offer a similar program for their oldest kids. Because that's, you know, they are faced with losing enrollment if people make the public school choice.
And just.
About that when we started our program and that I know there was response to that in our community was. Just them offering the same kind of, of TK program.
Yeah. And just, I want to say one more fact related to it. You were saying is that, I mean, almost all of our kids go to some type of preschool program. As a four year old, if they're not in our TK, before they come to our kinder. We survey them, it's like in close to 99% or in some type of program prior to coming to kinder. Whether that's our TK program or, or just a private one.
I just wanted to comment real quick. I had read the same study and shared it with Dr. Valoria and the Boston one has come out as well. The Tennessee one quickly was just, the flaw of it was they had segregated the kids where Boston had not. And this is talking about not, this is, you know, how to integrate all the kids together. And so that was the flaw of that particular study. The study though was shocked, you know, it's like a shocking result because it was opposite of what everything else has been produced. So, but it was not what this program is nor is.
And the, the Boston study was all different income levels too. So, but, but. All of this started a big preschool discussion about, or TK discussion about what should actually happen in TK. And if we were getting too academic, I just want to make sure that we're doing what's best for kids in the long run, not the short term.
Well, I, I think Dr. Member can also just talk about what they saw on Coronado and how that was integrated because it was impressive when he shared that.
I think it would be helpful to have some preliminary data from the planning team on what the TK. Instructional day looks like, and I use that term loosely, meaning. What is the allocated time for outdoor unstructured play? What's the allocated time for block play? What's the allocated time for unstructured art? What's the allocated or maybe desired time for? What would be called in TK or even preschool circle time, but direct instruction to give the board some comfort at what we're attempting to do. Whether it's the same as, as in our existing TK, we have a feeling that maybe that's different than a kindergarten classroom. Or maybe we desire it to be slightly different as we go down the scale to more four year olds. So I think what I heard from the three other board members was that that would be an area of, of interest to see what that. Day might look like or what the desire is for that to look like. So maybe that would be something we could get in a, a future update.
Yes.
Blocks, playground time, circle time, you know, we're, we're back to, I hate to use the word instructional minutes, but what does a day look like? What do we want that to look like as a district? Would that be?
Yes. But I think, I also think that's kind of in the weeds because we're not, we're not designing the program. The people, we hired someone, he's hired people and inherited people, they're designing the program. So I understand getting the information back on it. But what we're trying to focus on is, is this something we want to do? Like mostly kids are attending some kind of preschool, transitional kindergarten. Do we want to provide it? Within their taxes that they already pay versus them having to pay outside of that for this. And that's what we're really deciding. Then parents can individually select based on what the programs are, kind of like what member Vickers was saying is you have to be competitive. You have to figure out where you're gonna, what you're gonna choose. So they would then decide where's best fit for their child, just as they always do. So we're just trying to figure out whether this is something we want the board, we want the district to move forward on or not. And what's my wrong, my, my comment. Okay. And then whether it's something that's more extended or something that like follows kindergarten or something that's shorter. And then Boys and Girls Club, which gets to my question. I know, I know the presentation was all on the shorter day and then the extended of Boys and Girls Club. But why is that the assumption? Is it, was, has there been feedback already or are you open to doing both based on what feed? Not both, not both, but one or the other based on the feedback that comes back?
What was the question, President Norman?
What, all the assumptions were on the shorter day with Boys and Girls Club as the extended day. And I was just under, I'm just asking why that's the assumption. I didn't know if feedback already came in or not.
Yeah, that's, thank you. The, and yes, we can provide kind of like a general schedule of what it looks like. But, and I, you know, going back to this last one, our TK program is a play based program with exposure to academics. But we can definitely provide an update on what that looks like. As, as far as the assumption of it, you know, we could continue the program we've had. We've consistently heard over the years, the challenge around parents in doing a three and a half hour program. And then just in the survey that we sent out this week, it kind of reinforced that almost, almost all the responses that gave feedback. Specifically, it was, yes, location would probably have, people prefer a location at T W. There's definitely a set of families that would like that, but across both communities, there was a need for some type of extended hours. And having that flexibility is apparent. Now, there was no, it wasn't like I need a full day. Some were like, I need to two o'clock. Some were like, I need to noon. Some were like, I need to five o'clock. But it was definitely, almost everyone gave feedback on wanting more time for their student, for childcare.
And I wasn't, I was just wondering, I wasn't saying like we should go to five, to five o'clock or you know, beyond the schools being open. I just meant following what we already do for kindergarten versus what we used to do for kindergarten. I was just wondering what the, I know facilities, I know there's cost. I was just wondering what the, because others, I guess you just said double that, right? So I was just wondering. If part of what you're asking us is if we want to have it follow kindergarten timeframe? Or do we want to have it with still the extension to Boys and Girls Club? Is that what you're looking for direction on versus the shorter amount of time with a longer extension of Boys and Girls Club if that's chosen?
We're just looking, really want to have the extended day program at all, really? Like, do we want to partner with that? I mean, you, you think through four year olds, one of the things we look at is like with four year olds, like there's still potentially like they need downtime, right? Nap time, some, for many of them, right? Our facilities are not set up for that. That's all, that's, you would have to have a very different set of way things are organized in classrooms. Different ways with Cubbies, all kinds of different things set up as well. While you have a whole. Cave through five school hustling and bustling throughout the day with recess, right? So versus another facility where they might go to from noon to three or noon to four. A place like Boys and Girls allows that flexibility for parents. But then they have a space that's, that is set up for that already.
Pam's here, right? Yeah. Where? The youngest children now, do they go to all your locations?
So I guess I'm not clear on the question, which.
The youngest children.
Oh, the youngest kids.
Because you have, you have a, an age that you start at.
Yes. So our, we have at our Canyon branch, we have a licensed preschool. And we're actually in the process of getting another room, kind of. Port, portion of that building licensed as well. And so our preschool is for three and four year olds. So we have them when they're three and four. And it's only the one side.
Stay past their program time.
What?
They don't stay past their program time. When that, when your three and four year olds program is over, they don't blend in with all the other children in the Boys and Girls.
So they, 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 yes, they're in the morning and then they leave.
And your, and our current kindergarten students that get dropped off, are they dropped off at the Bluebird only?
No, well, kindergarten is at both sites. I think that, I do think that we have a couple TK after schools that are only at our Canyon branch.
Okay. Cause I know from years ago, that would be a concern for parents. That they, that the youngest children would not be with some of the older children.
Oh, a hundred percent. These are really, they're, they're kind of self contained areas of the organization with their own bathrooms and. Everything that they're, they're, you know, sectioned off from the rest of the kids.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Tied in with that chat, I would, I would, the, I think we would need more information from the responses that you had as to what. People were looking for in extended hours. If their, if their perception was that their child would stay in one location. Or if they're, or if they would know that the child might go to another location, that would be, I think, useful information to know what we. What might be expected of us for our planning as far as facility use. I know you mentioned that if they, you know, we wouldn't be set up to do, to do napping, but you know, as far as a shorter time.
We did, so we did ask, we did ask that, at least initially. All the, of the respondents that were going next year, which is about 30 families have responded about next, next year that would qualify for next year. About two thirds of them would require, would prefer and would like to have an extended day program. And of those, of those two thirds, except, except for just a couple of them, they all, so they would be fine with bus transportation to another facility. There was a couple that said no, but almost, I think it was just a couple.
Now, the, the, those people that responded, they're included in the extending that two months?
Yeah. So the group that I'm looking at would be the six months, potentially next year, you're looking at six months of students.
Are all, are all school districts doing that with the extending the time? Is that a state requirement that you had, that you, they'd add the two months for next year?
Doing an extended time, like beyond the. The extended months, yes.
Eligibility.
Yes.
Okay.
All part of that.
So everybody will be doing that.
I don't know, I don't know of any districts that have chosen not to at this point.
Thank you.
I wanted to just voice my support for trying to continue to grow the partnership with Boys and Girls Club to offer that extended day. There is a million different flavors of what parents need after a preschool program might end. And a program that's already set up to accommodate maybe a certain number of days that somebody might need that type of care, certain number of hours. Especially as they grow that program to maybe include the ability for four year olds to nap or rest. To be sectioned off in an area, maybe just with other four year olds. I think that that's a wonderful opportunity and a service that we can provide to our community while keeping our K through five sites focused on. K through five and not growing that capacity, especially where the numbers are at in our district, right? We're talking about maybe 40 kids. It would seem like a lot of changes to a K through five site to accommodate really what four year olds need. And what parents need.
Are you talking about the whole program or just the extended?
Just the extended day. Cause I think the district was asking for some direction on whether we want to continue exploring that partnership with Boys and Girls Club. For that extended, extended day, extended hours after the, the three hours of TK. So that's.
I, I agree. I think Boys and Girls Club is wonderful and I would love to have that option for parents. And hopefully there will be enough room there for napping, 30 napping four year olds or whatever.
Do you have a waiting list for the Boys and Girls Club program now?
Yeah. So we do not have a waiting list at our Canyon branch. Our Canyon branch is a 25,000 square foot facility. And what's, when COVID hit, you know, of course initially everyone stayed at home, but so it's, it's been a little. Not slow, but we are not up to our pre COVID. Attendance numbers, but so we've got a ton of room and it really, you know, having it, just to promote it. Having it there onsite with the two areas of the club that are licensed for preschool. So they're licensed for four year olds. For us, it would be a lot better because we wouldn't have to double up on staff to go to two separate sites on the school sites. And also I think there's something nice about the kids getting off of the campus for part of the day. And it's just a different, you know, state of mind for them. So, so that's, yeah.
What is your capacity?
I don't exactly know that offhand, but it's probably around 250 kids a day. Right now we're like 75 to 100.
What age group, what age group are we talking about? It, you.
What's that?
What age group are you talking about?
Oh, oh, from.
Two hundred and fifty.
Oh yeah, from three to 18.
Eighteen years old. Okay.
Yeah.
But what are you licensed for at the lower end?
The licenses, the only license that we have is for the preschool program or the, it's actually the area that's licensed. And so it's for the preschool specifically for three and four year olds.
And do you know what the number is for that?
Right now we only have about 15 preschoolers. We're licensed. For the one area is 25, we're looking for 25 for the other area too. So that would be 50.
Thank you. Very helpful. And will we be starting in this fall for the children who up to February 2nd as far as for the pre K?
Yes. Yeah, we'll go up through February. Turning five between September 2nd and February 2nd.
I was at the PTA council meeting and this program was a big discussion item with the parents. And the big thing they want to know is, when are you going to let them know? Because the registration for these other schools is, is coming upon them. And so they would, they would be, the sooner the better is what they would like to have. And the other thing is they're very interested in there being a program at the top of the world. That they, again, some parents were talking about that with the children that they currently have, they really couldn't be bringing them down to El Moro. And at the same time, supporting them up at top of the world. So I'm glad that we're looking at the two, the two sites.
Yeah. And that would be like step one, right? Is do we want to extend it to February 2nd? And once we know that, we can, well, we're sending registration information out that includes those extra two months. Then the other piece is then, you know, we, we think of, we're, we're gonna, if we're expecting it to grow, which we are. You know, we would need two classrooms and it would make sense to have one at each school. And then the last piece within is Dick, do we want to offer this essentially extra hours, right? Extended hours. Like our TK program, just to be clear, is through, well, right now it's about three and a half hours, right? So we'd be right around that three and a half hour range for our TK program. And then partnering with the Boys and Girls Club, you know, for extended child, extended day, extended hours of childcare, which we know is very much around social, emotional. Wellness and social, and social development that we, as we always do, partner with them. We plan that out together. But our actual TK program would be that half day program.
I wanted to make one other note on the, to Dr. Kelly's point. On starting this fall and I echo the sentiment, private paid preschools typically enroll in February. So there's probably a lot of consternation between parents of four year olds trying to decide where they need to secure a spot. I'd also say that there's a lot of preschoolers coming out of the not having gone to preschool range. We've saw it at the, in the Boys and Girls Club numbers. We've seen it at many other private preschools. We saw it in our own TK numbers. There could be a, a lot of children reentering preschool. So time, time is of the essence. So I really appreciate how quickly we're acting on this. My other point though, I want to bring up is on the ratio. So the state is requiring one to 12 for this year. One to 10 for 2023 to 24. I am a strong believer that we need to meet or exceed the next year's ratio. Remember Perry pointed out, you know, concern over just having a really high quality program, anything that this district does. Remember Perry pointed out, you know, concern over just having a really high-quality program, anything that this district does, we want it to be really high-quality. We have no doubt that it won't be. But I would advocate for, for no more than a one-to-ten ratio and, and, you know, Pam's probably familiar with this, the state licensing ratio that has been around for decades for four-year-olds is one to eight. So to put twelve children in a classroom that are still four-year-olds, I just would love to see the district commit to, to hold that ratio low, because I think that will be a big driver of quality, so.
Are there any other comments, questions? Support moving forward with the program? And Jim?
For this. Let's go.
I, I'm totally for it too. I, I had a, you know, I went back and looked at what it costs when the kids were little, you know, I just went back and filled out spreadsheets because husband likes spreadsheets. But and for two working parents having that extended time, I know it's a personal choice. There, there are places in town that offer, you know, three days a week for three hours. It would be five days a week for three and a half hours. So it is more time. If you don't fit the, the need base for Boys and Girls Club, there's still a cost to that, right? And I just think taxes are high enough that we should do the best that we can to provide for the parents. And if parents wanted less time, they, they wouldn't choose the five days a week, right? They, they still use the other, the other ones that provide less time, right? So I know there's a lot of personal choice. I know it's really hard that you guys are navigating because they're little, right? And they get exhausted and they need to do other things. So I think I came in hoping it would be a longer day and thinking about how little they are, not just the money of it, the money side of the equation. I'm like, you know, a shorter day where they then could transition to something where they could take a nap and have a break. And, and Jan's more the expert on place flowers than I am, but it's probably a better option, so. And I changed my mind, Jan, when we were talking. So, but I, it was absolutely fabulous job and presentation and all of the being here and the dedication every day to the students is felt, it's understood and echoing the fact that whatever you install, whatever you do is going to be of high quality. There's no reason we expect less. And I really appreciate all the options you're providing, right? And that you're really looking to see what the committee wants. And I know it's a really tough time because of COVID and little ones can't get vaccinated and parents have all their own choices around that. So appreciate everything you did and thank you to all the staff that worked on it. And please extend that our gratitude to whoever isn't here that's been working on this. We really, the board really appreciates this and the time that you're dedicating and how quickly you're moving.
You're welcome and I appreciate that. We have enough direction to go forward with adding those two months and then looking at our options a lot more closer around the, some type of extended day program to partner with that and what that might look like. Thank you.
We appreciate that. Thank you. Fabulous job. And this is, we're moving on to seven A. And again, there are no members of the audience, public members of the audience to speak to the approval of positive certificate, certification of the second interim report, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. So Mr. Dixon, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Norman. Tonight I'm presenting before you the second interim report to the district's operating budget for the current fiscal year. Just as a reminder, the, the district's budget is approved before July one every year. And we do first interim, which we did back in November. And then now tonight is second interim, which is required by the state to be done prior to March fifteenth, which is why we're doing it tonight. And it is data that is up through the end of January of current year. So it gives us good snapshots. Like first interim, there are very few changes to the adopted budget. However, I'm going to go through all of them tonight at the highlight and then as always, I'll be available for questions. So as we start, we look, we're going to talk through the revenue changes focusing in on what major categories were affected, primarily our, our LCFF, our property tax, and then we'll look at state funds as well as federal. And we'll look at our expenditures to see what changes has occurred there. Most of it having to do with the receipt of grants and then some minor staffing changes. And then we'll get into our ending fund balance as well as our multi-year projections. At the end, and I'll, I'll give away the surprise now, we're recommending the board approve a positive certification of the second interim report. So as we get into the revenue changes, very minor, again, the LCFF and property tax revenues remain unchanged from first interim. There were some, a slight change in federal revenues. That's based on what was budgeted at notice versus what was actually received by those grants. The other state sources had increased from first interim. That's really primarily having to do with the award of the educator effectiveness grant and the expanded learning opportunities grant program. So just to give some scale, the educator effectiveness grant is about seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. So that, that's why that change is a significant. And then other local sources, again, we don't budget for donations until they're received. So that's why that's changed and it's, it's positive. As we look at the expenditures, you can see that as we made the adjustments through the end of January, we realized that there was a slight over-budget for staffing. As that's been reduced, there's a subsequent impact on benefits as they're calculated as a percentage of salary. When you look at the books and supplies, you have the increased support for the assessments. And we talk about the multi-tiered systems of support. It's primarily going to the work there for the school sites. When you look at the services and other operating, the increase is primarily driven by routine restricted maintenance. And then capital outlay, as we've experienced, some of the shipping and supply chain issues. One thing that we've done this year is pre-purchased some of the equipment necessary for the four CLE initiative to complete the projects at the elementary schools and their library, as well as the upgrades that we did at the elementary schools. And then there are no changes to the transfers. And you look at the components of the ending fund balance, again, this is very, very similar to first interim. Really, the only change is to do with the assigned potential one-time. And at second interim, it's slightly higher than what you saw at first interim, with the fund balance still remaining about sixteen million dollars. In the next slide, you see the multi-year look. Again, maintaining a positive financial position with a steady include, steady minor increase in our overall fund balance, both this year and in the next two years. So as a reminder, when we bring any interim report to the board, there's three different certifications that can be given. There's a positive certification, which we're recommending tonight. That means you're demonstrating the ability to meet your current and future fiscal liabilities. There's a qualified certification, which means you may or may not be able to meet those liabilities. And there's a negative certification, which means you will not be able to meet your financial obligations. We are recommending, based on the financial figures before you tonight, that we are again, a positive certification at second interim, and I'm happy to take any questions from the board. Oh, I, I apologize. I, I also, as a reminder, want to, as we're at one of the last phases in the process of the budget report and adjustments being second interim, just a reminder that as we begin to develop next year's budget, the budget cycle is a year-long process that begins with early presentations in May or June as an information item only on the budget, at which time we've gone through input, any of the assumptions brought forward at that meeting, as well as feedback brought, bring it back to the board as an action item in late June prior to that July one. And then into first and second interim, noting the adjustments as we have done for you tonight. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. That was I was just wondering, can you guys clarify for me what the unassigned reserves are for? And like, oh, wait, am I ahead of that?
Okay, so, good question. Thank you, Natalie. Unassigned reserves as shown on the, the components of ending fund balance. So I'm looking at slide six, and that will show several.
Yeah, and like also what the like assigned potential one-time expenditures, like what do those, those things like go towards and like the school? Because I'm just like not as familiar on it, I guess you would say, yeah.
So, great question. What you're looking at is called fund balance, which means it's all funds remaining in the general fund when all revenue and expenditures have occurred. So at the end of the year, this is what's left over. There are components of that fund balance that are required and that you need to maintain in your fund. And the best example is what you just gave, the unassigned reserves, reserved for economic uncertainties. There's a five percent, our district has a five percent minimum of the total budget must be set aside and maintained as reserve for economic uncertainties. So that will always be in the components of ending fund balance. You always see that. When you see the assigned potential one-time, that you see highlighted in yellow there, those are assigned dollars in the, in the fun, in general fun for board goals, priorities, or unforeseen that the district experiences throughout the year. So that's going to be, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. And are those like public fund, public funds? Like, are they coming from the public or are they like grants? Some of them like contributed, are they all the funds like from, sorry.
Good question.
Does that question make sense?
It's a great question, and the vast majority of all of our revenue comes from local property taxes. So it's a local property tax that's feeding the bulk of our revenues, which leads to a general fund balance. And then what you're looking at are the components of that fund balance. Yeah, you got it. Good question.
And with the previous conversation we're having about extending TK, would that come out of those funds to do that? Since we're not getting additional funds for that? To kind of help, like what, things we would spend it on?
It certainly could. The idea being that it's a flexible funds available for board goals, priorities, or district initiatives or issues that come up.
Yes. Any other questions or comments? Always look at Jim. Thank you. And please thank your team. I mean, all the stuff that they present to us and provide for us, it's so helpful.
Absolutely.
It seems like it gets better every year. And thank you for the last part of really explaining to the board the reminders. That's how the budget cycle works so that we can definitely give feedback at the appropriate times.
Thank you. Yes, absolutely.
Okay, I see other questions or comments. I need a motion or questions. Any, just any discussion?
I.
All in favor? Good motion carries, anyone opposed? Motion carries five zero. It's a bit hard to hear. Get this, moves us to eight A. And again, there's no members of the public to speak to. The approval of up to seven delegates for the California School Board Association twenty-two delegate assembly election. Member Kelly, the floor is yours.
I reviewed all the materials. I've, I've looked up on websites regarding the individuals. All I can say is that the candidates are exceptional. They bring an awful lot of different perspectives from PTA to the Harvard Business School. It was very difficult eliminating individuals. And I'm going to ask Victoria to read the names of the individuals and the districts that I have, that I have recommending to you. There's six incumbents and it's seven districts that are represented.
Michelle Bartow, Newport Mesa Unified School District. Lauren Brooks, incumbent Irvine Unified School District. Carrie Buck, incumbent Placentia Yorba Linda Unified School District. Lynn Davis, incumbent Testin Unified School District. Candace or Candy Kern Cypress Elementary School District. Anne Marie Randall Trejo, incumbent Anaheim Union High School District. And Michael Sim, Simons, Huntington Beach Union High School District. And he was an incumbent.
That looks like a nice mix, elementary, high school, as well as different districts.
I move that we accept Member Kelly's recommendation. Second? And Victoria, since you just read all those, do I still need to read the back? Okay, perfect. Okay, are there any other comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. And this moves us to five A. The next regular meeting is Thursday, October fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Where did I say that? Geez. I didn't even check. Okay, March twenty-fourth. Yeah, I did. You totally cut and paste laws. I have a motion to adjourn. Okay, two more seconds. There we go. Thank you so much. As a reminder, BB ninety-two hundred, when we adjourn, the board is no longer seated and thus we have no individual authority until we're seated again. Natalie, Matt, have your steward provisional vote to adjourn. Thank you. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries closer. I'm still going to ask. It's at, we adjourn at seven sixteen PM. Thanks, everyone.